Okay, we are gonna bring this meeting to order.
Recording in progress.
As you all know, Megan Torn is in an airplane on the way to Washington State, Seattle, so not able to attend tonight's meeting and so I have been recruited to chair the meeting and I have a reputation of having fast meetings which I really don't want to tarnish at all. So, hope you guys will work with me here. Alright, so I hope you've all reviewed our minutes and...
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, secondly, public comment, and there doesn't seem to be anybody online.
Nobody online, nobody here.
Nobody here. Well, we have Gnet here, which is very important. Thank you for being here. So, we will move on from public comment to highway certification standards that need to be signed, sealed, and delivered.
Yeah, if you remember, annually, we do this. There's this certificate of compliance for the standards and then the network inventory, and then there's the standards themselves. And they make us read up them every year. There's no change on the document from year to year, and I will pass them around. Answer any questions if there are any questions.
I was just, you know, trying to understand again, on the, you know, Class 4 road standards, you know, on hydrologically connected road segments, we're in, uh, trying to figure out the noes, you know, why they're, why they're okay. And I assume Class 4 because we're not really responsible.
We're not obligated, and it's not required, but you can, you know...
Yet they ask the question. Then guardrail standard, which, you know, I took a quick look at what it said, and I was just, you know, when they have standards and we end up saying, "No, we're not doing it," it's kind of, it's, you know, okay, just wanted to make sure that's cool. Because they have a guardrail standard that we're, we don't have to follow, though, I guess.
Not particularly. I mean, it, um, yes and no.
When it makes sense.
Yeah, the application for that, we don't have a ton of locations where it's logical or, you know, where it would be, and that we probably have.
Actually, I kind of think there are a lot, there are a lot where it could be, but you'd have guardrails everywhere.
You would have them everywhere, yeah.
Okay.
So, I would appreciate a motion to approve the, um, the bridge stand, road, road and bridge standards as presented and the certification of compliance to those standards as presented.
I'll make the, well, I'll make that motion.
And I will happily second it.
Okay, Jim makes a motion, Liz seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Does this need to be signed by everyone present here?
Yeah.
Rob, do you want me to come in tomorrow and sign that, or read it up?
Yeah, no, that would be great. Or maybe Frank, the next time that you sign warrants, maybe next week or something, we can just all attach it to that, we can do it then.
So, there's two things to sign here, right?
Correct, yeah. One pager and then that one that you're signing in the back of that page. And then, alright, I've got the next two agenda items flip-flopped in the packet, so I'm not sure how you want to...
Oh, we'll go according to the agenda. So, housing committee update. We received a letter today, a letter this past week from Liz Ruffa announcing that she needs to resign from the housing committee. Liz and I have been co-chairing the, uh, the housing committee, but Liz has really taken the lead primarily in, in that effort and has done a stellar job in keeping things moving, so she will be greatly missed. So, we need to accept her letter of resignation and then consider what to do in replacing her. So, I think the first order business would be to...
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept Liz, except with, 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 oh, heavy art. Liz's, right, Liz's resignation letter.
And, and I will second that. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. I did hear an aye from you, Liz.
Yes.
I know, I know.
Well, who is, who's been the most, who's been most active on the housing committee?
I think everybody's been fairly active. I mean, definitely Dave McIneney, I think, kind of stands out as being, uh, probably most energetic, but certainly Ben.
He's been constant, constant, but Ben has been a great, everybody's kind of had their role.
Been a really good attendance.
Yeah, Julie, Carter.
Done their thing. It's a great group.
But, you know, it's a long slog, and I know Rob's gonna speak to a little bit of this shortly, but, so...
Interestingly, Dave's not listed on the committee list in the town report.
Really?
Uh-oh. That's too bad. No, he's definitely...
I don't think we have that in there.
On page seven?
Page seven? Oh, yeah. Oh, Peter.
Well, we'll have to, it's my fault.
And Sefton is no longer a member.
Shame on me. Um, yep, I'll have to issue a formal apology to Dave. Can do it at ten meters.
Um, so, the, Liz, in her letter, recommended a woman named Kate Kaplinsky.
Yep, Kate Kaplinsky.
Kaplinsky. Uh, and Kate is, um, Kate live in East Dorset here?
No, she lives on Route 30 in Dorset.
Okay. And she is, is she currently with the Southwest Vermont Medical?
Yes, she is the Communications and Marketing Director for the hospital.
Yeah, okay. Um, so...
And, you know, a fairly new, but not brand-new resident of the town with a great recommending, you know, a great, um, skill set and an interest in stepping up to, she'd love to do something for the town. She has some, some free time. And it just, it occurred to me that in the various subcommittees that I sat on, that the, um, the marketing and messaging one is the one that I am leaving, and of course, capable hands with Peter Kinder and Dave, and you and I have been working on that, but that she might, you know, be able to add some real, um, bench strength.
Yeah.
Especially since she does messaging for the hospital, so she understands a lot of the nuances of, you know...
Communication.
Yep, in the public setting.
And she's happy to do it?
She's, yes, she would be, she would be very pleased to entertain an invitation to join the, the committee.
So, I was kind of hoping she'd be on tonight.
So did I, and I didn't hear back from her and I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't able to follow up, so, you know...
Because it would be great to have just a, a letter or a note or something from her expressing...
Because I don't know whether it would be a little awkward to appoint her without doing any of that.
Right.
Right, right.
You have time, too, I mean, there's...
Well, yeah, I, if I'm no longer on the committee, but if I could suggest...
So, why don't I make a, why don't I suggest that we, we invite Kate Kaplinsky?
To come talk to you guys.
To, to join us at our next meeting and discuss becoming a part of the housing committee.
And she could also come to the next housing committee meeting again if she wanted. She came to the one in January.
Oh, she did?
Yeah, she was here.
And I missed that, I guess.
She, you were not there?
I was away.
You were away. Yeah, no, she came and she, um, listened, and, yeah, and I followed up and she said, "No, absolutely, I'd, I'd love to work on that."
Okay.
So, you know, what I can do is I will, again, email Rob and you and her, and you guys can take it from there.
Yeah.
But I think that she'd be a fresh, smart, young, bright addition.
What were you gonna suggest?
That we invite her in for the next meeting.
Okay, so that's, we can just do that. We don't need a motion of order or anything.
Put it in the minutes and we'll ask her to, to join us next meeting.
To come to the next select board meeting.
And, you know, she can, you know, send us a note with why she wants to be on.
Okay, then, um, moving on beyond that, Rob, you wanna speak to...
Yep, you got a whole slew of stuff to kind of work through. I've got a one-pager in the packet that is more or less meant to be the handout, like, go maybe in the town report or be printed and available at the town meeting. It's the one that says Housing Committee Progress Report, Town Meeting 2025. It gives kind of a, a background of, okay, we appointed the group, um, this is kind of how they formed, this is who they are, this is overarching goals. What's that, Jim?
Nope, none.
Okay, overarching goals, um, what they've done with regard to Raptor Lane and the, um, the front-end feasibility study related to engineering, and additionally, the consulting with White and Burke and some of White and Burke's, um, that kind of outlined processes. And then at the bottom, kind of a perspective time, timeframe, as it relates specifically to Raptor Lane. And I'm, this is just kind of words on a paper, so it certainly can be edited and then changed. Sorry, go ahead, Frank.
But which page are you on? I'm a little lost.
Page 20 on the package.
It's after the town meeting stuff.
Yeah, right after the town clerk treasurer article.
Yeah, that was...
Okay.
It's titled, uh, Housing Committee Progress Report.
I don't know whether it's easy to do so, but, you know, but I thought, in general, having, having page numbers on the packet.
Yeah.
I don't know whether, it could, it could be a pain in the butt. If it's a pain in the butt, then don't bother.
No, I've got, um, I've got like the Ferrari version of Adobe, I'm pretty sure I can figure it out.
I promise not to be sick next time, so don't worry about it.
If it's easy to do, it's just that...
No, I think you're...
I end up, big, gotta write the page numbers at the bottom.
Big bull. So, yeah, I think it kind of gives an overage of kind of where we're at with the committee, with Raptor Lane, and this is meant to be kind of a one-pager out facing to the, to the voters, to give them an update. So, I'm happy to make any edits to it, or wordsmith anything. Was also gonna throw this by the housing committee at their next meeting, which is next week, on the 26th. I don't think that there's, there's a lot of bulleted stuff, which maybe it's too much information, I don't know.
No, I think that's good.
You know, but there, the town has put pretty significant resources into the due diligence, so I think it's helpful to show, you know, it's not just, um, kind of pontificating about, you know, fixing the housing problem. There's some real kind of boots-on-the-ground stuff that's being done as it relates to Raptor Lane.
Just thinking, you know, if anything, if you wanted to pull it out a little bit, the, the White and Burke memo really did sort of lay out all the things that have been done really, really well.
Yep.
Sort of like, you know, well, you know, this is really...
I could add to, so my thinking with this, Jim, was to try to keep it to a page.
Yeah, you're right.
Just as it's, I, I, like, I easily, I think I got to, like, I started and it was like three pages. I was just like, oh, God, like, you know, this is, um, gonna have a hundred people plus, you know, have a captive audience, try to keep it short, sweet, and just kind of hit the real highlights, but I can certainly add stuff from the White and Burke report.
No, I think it's, it's gonna get too long at some point.
And that's kind of a good segue into that report, is that it, you know, we've got all these kind of irons kind of in the fire, so to speak, with the committee and with Raptor Lane and whatnot, and I think it, the select board's at an inflection point now where the initial part of White and Burke's, um, consulting work is more or less done. They've kind of truthed out that they feel that, um, the committee and the town is on a good trajectory with the way that it's attacking the, the approach toward Raptor Lane with the, the whole combination of, um, trying to find a private developer, have the town underwrite, um, costs, infrastructure costs, stuff like that, in an, in an effort to try to maximize the potential for workforce and senior housing units. But one of the, I think, critical next steps that's kind of come into the forefront is that in order to have, you know, an agreement with, or in order to have a project, you've got to have that private developer. And with, you're not gonna get a private developer without formatting some kind of an RFP selection process. And the fact that that, it would make logical sense to go down that road to get an entity or entities interested or involved prior to embarking on additional permitting, planning, design, natural resource work, because you don't want to get too far into that and then realize that there's either, you know, the scope of the development partnerships isn't maybe as broad as you thought it would be, or the development partners might have just different ideas or different capabilities, you know. So, it kind of brings into, um, question some of the, not so much question, but just the, the timeframe and kind of the, the checklist that we have to go through to get, um, you know, next steps done on Raptor Lane, so I think...
So, Rob?
Go ahead, Frank.
Would it be, um, trying to get the RFP out before doing some of the next phase of environmental assessments on the habitats and the species that we already have going?
That, no, it would be essentially, so we're gonna do the VHB study, which is all those, that natural resource stuff, and that, because that, um, that could have a, a wide-reaching impact, that's, that's kind of like...
Because we need to know that no matter what happens.
You got it, yeah, that's kind of numero uno, and then, and then the RFP is, okay, assuming that the, the VHB study goes kind of according to plan, the way they thought it would, um, what is, what does the development community feel about?
Okay.
That, what we have here.
Okay, because that, I was kind of, I was getting confused, because the email from White and Burke was suggesting RFP, you know, having picked somebody by June when we won't even have the...
Yeah, yeah, I, I think...
So, that's just, that's gonna be pushed a little further out.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I think the whole timeline for the White and Burke, um, work kind of gets pushed out.
So, instead of starting in February, it starts more like in July or something?
Um, we're gonna have to go back and look because of that whole question of, hey, what, should, do we want to wait until, um, bits and pieces of the VHB work is done so that we, you know, we have a little bit more information? And I, my general sense is that we would, instead of being... So, there's two parts. There's the RFQ, which is just like, who's, who's out there and who's qualified, and then, um, just get a sense of like, who's out there?
Yeah.
And that's, that's a little bit more informal and that can be done kind of, you know, before you know all the, all the...
Sort of a teaser.
Yeah, exactly. And then, and then you'd have a, um, a list to then send the RFP to. So, I think that, you know, that RFQ process is probably pushed into spring, early summer.
Okay.
And then the RFP would be somewhere, you know, along the lines of that late summer, probably, to dovetail with, we would be having, we have a lot of information all at once again, but like, you have, you'd have the RFP back, you'd have the resource study done, you'd have probably enough information to then take a month or two.
So, they're kind of talking about RFQ, RFP.
Yeah, the RFQ is just like, who's out there and who's qualified, and then, you know, say, six people respond and the RFP is like, oh, we like these three, you know, we'll send the RFP to them.
Couple, couple of, just quick question. In the, in the White, in the White and Burke report, when it, I found a little shocking the way they presented it, and permit feasibility that VH believed, VHB believes obtaining necessary permits and approvals to develop the property will not be insurmountable. That was kind of a very negative, you know, sort of...
Characterization of it.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I think they're trying not to understate the, and Frank could kind of echo on this, that it is a bit of a...
Yeah, I would've said the same thing.
Really?
It's a bit of a, um, unknown, I think. Right, Frank?
It, it just, it just goes to the fact that permitting is unpredictable. You have certain permits aren't easy, certain permits are hard. Act 250 for a project like this, um, you know, I could think of an application I would submit that I think is a hundred percent, and I know that weird stuff's gonna come at it.
Yeah.
So, I, I agree. I think ultimately, we'll be, we would be, you know, successful, but I think they're just catching it to say, look, it's not, you know, you fill out these boxes and you have a permit and you're done. It's complicated.
Yeah, you can't, can't rely on it.
Because of the relationship between some of the wildlife, the, the, the reach of some of the wildlife, um, regulation ability, um, we won't know until the, until VHB kind of has those interactions with the wildlife staff. I think if, um, the bear habitat typically has a, has a buffer around it that's recommended, um, you know, the bat tree stuff, essentially the tree cutting for the site is likely to be restricted, um, and probably like recommended that it would be done in phases or whatever, which may not be a really big deal, you know, if you're gonna build a project in phases anyway, uh, but, but you don't know until you get, you know, that on paper where the, where the state has said, okay, this is where we want you to go, um, you know, with this particular issue.
And the other thing, they kind of presented it as, you know, a big hurdle to get over is having our, the planning commission agree to make a couple of changes, which I wouldn't imagine that is a major hurdle.
Um, I think...
Or could it be?
Uh, I, no, I think White and Burke is, they've done a really good job of like outlining those kind of critical path items, and one of them is, you know, initially kind of an informal, um, sketch review with the planning commission, um, with the engineer, um, the town, and, and White and Burke to sit down and kind of present some of the concept plans to the planning commission to, to see the, the reaction that they have, to get their input and their feedback and all that stuff, because until something is really put in front of them, you're not really gonna know, um, you know, what the, what the feeling is, I guess, or what the temperature in the room is, so to speak.
Yeah, I just didn't, when it, like, the dead-end streets thing, which I don't know whether, you know, things could be, this can be approved as an exception to roles rather than rewriting the role completely, or whether that opens everything up to everybody else getting an exception, too, so...
Um, yep, kinda. It gets, it gets complicated.
Yeah, and that's what the resistance may come from.
Okay.
That you could create a, um...
Precedent that...
Well, a pinch point, you could give, you know, um, potential naysayers a kind of a reason to, something to hang their hat on.
Yep.
We know that. How that plays out.
So, I mean, I think the...
Is that what?
Go ahead, Frank.
So, I was just curious, I'm wondering if there's, that might be done in a variance, if that's even allowed under the new zoning I haven't looked.
Yeah, I don't know. I...
But I think if we needed a variance, we could certainly prove that there's a hardship for making looped roadways in there.
Yep, and I'm not sure about the, you know, the process for the PUD and all that. I mean, you know, it's new, it's a new, it's a new document, um, you know, planning commission doesn't have a lot of experience with it. I think in general terms, you know, I'd say that they're supportive of housing, just like everybody else is. So, it would be a good, you know, hopefully a good exercise to go through with them, to get the feedback, to help them, um, see it, to help them understand, um, you know, our, our bylaw has a unit, uh, you know, in, in the cluster development, you can have three to, three to...
Three to 12.
Three to 12 buildings is what our bylaw says. Um, in, in the concept plan that Enman and Kesselring has done, has done, there's as many as...
Fifteen.
Yeah, fifteen or twenty buildings in some of those pods, so that's the reason to have it moved. And the, those pods, as they are designed and the feasibility is really kind of, um, maximizing, um, the possibility based on the soils. So, that's the, the reason that they're, that they're recommended, not, um, not anything other than that. So, you know, that would be, those are just a few of the things you kind of gotta get through
This is a great memo, though.
Before you start to jump into preliminary engineering and stuff.
So, so Dave McIneney has reviewed that pretty thoroughly, and he, he is the planning commissioner, and he feels the planning commission should, will be fully on board. So, but again, it's just like an act 250, you just don't know until you actually start going out there. I had a couple of things, too. One is, you know, Megan is a little hesitant about using the number 100 units, and, um, I don't mind it myself, but...
It's got the word "up to."
Yeah, but you've got "up to."
So, I, Henry, I was just thinking the same thing about 100. I'm probably a little more concerned. I just could see somebody say, you know, glomming onto that number. So, I just think, I don't mind saying it, but I think, you know, how it's presented will just be important to say, it could support that much. We're not saying we're doing that, but that's what the preliminary studies have shown.
Yeah. Well, that's, so the...
If you throw, I think the, the flip side of that is if you throw a lower number out and then come out with a higher number later.
Yeah.
I think then you're opening, you're kind of opening yourself up a little bit.
Well, I'm for keeping it myself, but I just knew, know Megan would probably object, so I just wanted to get, get that in there.
So, you could rephrase, you could rephrase it, and I could say something like, the, the site has the potential, or up to 100 units, and kind of reframe it a little so that it doesn't sound like we're, that's the suggestion that's being made, but...
Well, it does, you know, it does right now, is a feasibility study, opportunity for up to 100 housing units. That doesn't, you know, that is not a definitive statement that that's what's...
Yeah.
I think it's, leaves enough room right now, and if people start screaming, "Hell, and under..." They can do that, but usually you get a fairly small number of peoples being very noisy.
On the other hand, if you throw it out there, there's not a peep, then it's okay. Then we're...
Yeah.
Part of it's kind of planting a flag.
Yeah, exactly.
It's definitely, um, I mean, I can understand Megan's thinking for sure. I mean, I think the, even in the early presentations from, um, Enman, I think that, you know, they were, good, you know, they were fairly shrewd to say, you know, this is what, this is what the metrics say, you know, based on what we've done. That's, that's it. It doesn't, it doesn't mean that, um, that's necessarily the right number, um, but, you know, we had tasked them with, okay, this is a town asset, what's the maximum? Like, what's the...
It's also a view...
And we could work back from there.
I think you can use stuff like the, you know... I think you can use stuff like the, you know, the Whitenburg memo, you know, it it seems to identify one of the biggest. Restraining factors is septic. And so, you know, we can say, you know, it could be up to a hundred because talking about, you know, needing the infrastructure. And that you could do infrastructure to accommodate that many, but you know, until we actually get into it, we don't know.
Don't know.
Yeah, it already it assumes a a public water system, but it's the the lack of sewer is what really. The limits the the unit number.
All right, well, let's let's keep it as is for now.
I think it's really easy to hedge off of.
The second thing I wanted to ask is, you have to put out an RFP. Do we need to know or decide on the the breakout of the units? You know, like how many are gonna be market um based, market priced?
That developer is gonna essentially tell us that that's.
We're gonna leave that to them.
Uh, we're gonna tell them, I think we can come up with like a an aspirational goal of what we'd like to see. Right, um, as high a number as possible, I'm not sure how we would define that, but. In the in the procurement procurement document for them, we say, you know, we're looking to have a blended market rate and and um. And uh workforce and senior housing and we would like a. Fifty fifty split. And then they're gonna come back and say, okay, well, with what you're what you're presenting, the assets you could, you know, provide. You know, this is kind of where we where we've come in in terms of the percentage split and I think that's gonna be the.
All the pieces that have to fit together are, you know, if there are grant funds available. If in addition to a regular developer, you have a housing agency. That could be doing some of it and it's gonna be then, you know, what do we kick in if we do? You know, they could end up saying, you know, if you wanted to actually do that many units, then you guys are, you know. To make that feasible, you're gonna have to do infrastructure or something. You know, it's a, I think it's all a negotiation, it's a multi-pronged negotiation.
It's all a negotiation. So leave it as wide open as we, okay.
Within reason, I I think Whiten Whitenburg is ju- their job is to help us craft that RFP in a way that um. You know, doesn't predict the answers that we're gonna get, but helps to keep us in the play in the. Uh, on the playing field that we're.
I think a lot of it, you know, I look at something like down in Bennington, the big projects doing down there and it was a matter of. First, you gotta get a whole lot of free money. And and, you know. You know, through grants and stuff and then and then it starts to become feasible and then you can start to plan things. Here, if there are grants available, then that increases your ability to get what you want, you know.
And it doesn't mean that a, you know, private developer couldn't partner with a nonprofit to have aspects of the of what we're looking for provided.
Cause I think it's gonna be tough for the town in the end to, if if somebody said, oh, you have to do all this infrastructure work, it's gonna be tough for us to. You know, unless we funded that through some property sales or something, you know, taxpayers aren't gonna wanna foot the bill to.
And there are um either additional grants or stuff like local option tax, so it is.
Where you sell off a a chunk or two of land.
You know, a new cost neutral to the to the community.
Where there's a, you know, it's a couple hundred grand per, you know, per lot out there, you know, the old lots, so. If you need a half a million bucks, you could potentially sell off some big building lots.
I think the RFP process is just, you know, it's a critical, it's gonna shed a lot of light on the reality of like, you know. Some of the due diligence that we've done, um, so that a lot of the questions around. Um, planning permitting, uh feasibility of development, all that stuff is gonna be kind of answered. To where um, within reason, you know, to where hopefully we can get uh some developers interested that would be. You know, able to um compete a little bit um and and provide good options. So that's kind of a, as far as Whitenburg is concerned, that's kind of a next step from that for them. He's put together a. A timeline and then kind of the next step for that would be. The more formal um agreement between the town and them. He's got a scope of services um document that's attached to this. And I think the one thing that we need more clarity on is just the how the how the brokerage agreement works.
I assume when it comes to RFQ RFP, they would be developing the list of developers. Would would rely on us to try and figure that out.
Yeah, that's correct, Frank, they have a um.
A comprehensive list of residential developers to receive.
And they've already, um, I think in theory have a couple of, you know, in the back of their brain that. Would be logical to send it to, it doesn't not doesn't mean that it's gonna be restricted to them by any means, but. Um, Whitenburg does this, you know, every day and we don't, so.
It'd be kind of nice if we had, you know, at the end of this, you know, when when the email with the timeframe, it was like, you know, choose developer. You know, pretty quickly and it was like, it'd be nice if we actually had a couple of them in the running for a while, so we could. You know, negotiate with.
I mean, the timeframe is really up to the, you know, up to the board and the town with the caveat of.
That's the best way to negotiate is if you got a couple of people interested.
The caveat of. I've got on the kind of the last document, it's a timeline for Rocky Lane. I've tried to kind of come up with a bulleted list of like, okay, from nuts to bolts, like this is what you're. You know, this is what I'm thinking a timeframe looks like, obviously I could be wrong, but um. With all the kind of iron, different irons in the fire, you know, because. You know, the the assumption is that we're going through local and act two fifty permitting, you know, that and we have to. You you've got to do design, you've got to do all that other stuff that you're a, you know, it's a two year process essentially. You know, so that you. And and that assume, this this timeline assumes that you're jumping into that like this hall. So, you know, which may not be the case, so uh depending on the whole um, you know, developer relationship process. But at least I think it's good to have it all on paper, so now that you have it, you can have a kind of better sense of the flow chart. Um, and if certain parts of it get changed or or edited. You know, we we can then update the time, the timeline, so that everybody can kind of have a better sense of what.
And you pointed out with act two fifty, the act one eighty one, but we're more than a mile away, so.
Yeah, the under the current um changes, the site probably isn't. A viable candidate to meet the requirements is the way they've laid it out, it's gotta be within a half mile of a designated village area. Um, and it's not, there there is a new piece of legislation that's um sitting there, I'm not sure if it'll get taken up or. Processed, but to essentially allow the communities to more or less just pick their their own. Tier A and one A and one B locations. And I'm not sure if they'll have, you know, the the unit count limitations, stuff like that, some of the. The one eighty one stuff has limitations to what can be done. So I, you know, who knows whether or not that'll change, all we can do is is kind of work with the the rules as we know them right now. As we've been doing so far, which is that we're. You know, probably fastest you could do it would be shovel in the dirt twenty twenty eight. Depending on, and that is, that's again, big assumption that you're designing permitting kind of a large thing, not. You could always pull back, change if if a if a developer comes in and says, yeah, we'll do thirty units. And we'd like to do it on that nine acres over there. You know, that I think starts to get a little sticky where you could move some lot lines. You know, potentially divest and then it wouldn't be.
They might give us a good deal on doing something.
Well, it may not be jurisdictional for act two fifty at that point, um, so that it would be, it would be just a different process for. For them, that that's where I'm I'm trying not to complicate it too much, but that's something that could, that could be like a right turn. At Albuquerque, if, you know, depending on what the what the developers come up with, they may say, hey, look. This this would be a type of a project we could do, this is we how we could structure it, this is a way to do it more quickly. You know, I that's again.
It's gonna be really interesting though, when we get into engaging the community and kind of seeing what. Did you know that some people will be knee jerk reactions or?
Yep, and I think so in the in the timeline, there's um, this is where the committee comes in. Neighbor and business outreach. Town officials and housing committee members uh develop outreach strategies to introduce the concept plan um to the community. Um, and I think the this is gonna, we're gonna talk about it next week at the housing committee, um, and hopefully. Uh, you know, create a list of businesses and um other folks that some of the committee members will tackle. And then they can, we can start to have maybe a, you know, a one pager that we all kind of read from and. Um, that we bring to, you know, again, business owners and other community members to make them aware of it, I think a big. During that same timeframe, you know, the the town going out to to some of the budding neighbors, I think is a logical. Um, thing to do as well, we're gonna talk about that next week at the committee meeting too, where the town would essentially say, hey, you know. Kind of, this is already gonna be talked about at town meeting, but like you're you're, this is different because you're, the relationship is different, you're. You know, an a budding neighbor, this is kind of what we're looking at, we'd like your feedback, good, bad, otherwise. And then, because you've got some time to, you know, maybe that can even inform the design process before you even get to the. Permitting, so that when maybe when. You know, you get to that point, somebody speaks up and you say, no, remember when we talked a year and a half ago and you said you wanted this, here it is, right here. That you can try to make the process as uh seamless as possible, but it's. It's a mul-, you know, it's multifaceted and it's um, uh, you've got those state and local processes to go through. It's a lot of information and it's basically, you know, it's two to three year kind of, there it is in front of you, so.
So, basically at town meeting, where well, you're about to to talk about the town meeting, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, we'd have this one pager, um, you'd have maybe maybe another document. Um, we talked about like a like a flashy kind of rack card that could get handed out where people could. Maybe it links to our website and we'll just have some of this information on it. So that the messagings can start to get out there um ahead of any of the actual decision making.
All right, any more on housing committee? Then let's move on to preparation for the town meeting.
Backwards in the packet, sorry about that. Um, so I've got a bulleted, one, two, three, four, five. Three, four page document, um, basically that we can have available, we can hand out. In addition to the budget and everything else, uh, gives a kind of a summary of some of the critical path items that the town's been working on. Over the last, um, you know, year or so. Um, I'm not gonna beat him up too much, I I would just ask if there's things in there that you think. Don't need to be included because it's just too much minutia, or if there's something that I missed, I can. I tried to just hit highlights on each each thing, the town office is pretty straightforward. That'll get updated a little bit, but we're roughly halfway through. Um, housing stuff we talked about, um, you know, the STR ordinance, I think is just something to be um noted. Uh, a lot of public works type stuff, uh, as well as the, I think it's in our report, but the. The potential for the apprentice pond. Kind of item to. Come along, it may, it's one of those um cans, it's a can.
I don't know whether we give any. I don't think we give any indication of, that's a that's a big can to kick.
Yeah, I don't, I could even be kicked again, I don't even, you know, I don't have the report yet, so um.
But if we bring up numbers, it's gonna scare people.
Well, and it's it's got multiple, there's water, there's roads, there's the dam, so it's it's a large thing, but you know. Um, it'll, I don't think that there's gonna be any any um human cry to do something right right away. Uh, but at some point, we'll have to start to do the kind of planning and preparation for it. Yeah, then it kind of just gets into the budget, which is all just kind of boilerplate stuff that you guys have been looking at for a couple of months. And I, my plan was just I'll have a kind of a slide deck that goes along with this, um, and just. Probably two or three or four slides, just go through it as a presentation, answer questions.
I was just going to end this, um, any other items to report on, I just didn't know if you wanted to mention. That Discover Dorset continues and there's a new web.
Yes, thank you.
That was sort of. Wasn't that mentioned?
A new editor?
Well, no, no, I I don't know what we would call her, um.
That social media.
You know, she's the the editor, the.
Well, that's the budget appropriation continued partnership with Dorset change.
And Hatfield. She's still doing it, right?
Yes, yep, yeah, I could tease that out, those in a different. Manner.
Cause people might ask.
And I do have, um, yeah, I've got some metrics in there, but there's, I've got better metrics than that, so.
You you mentioned that the county tax info comes out February, is that, is that coming out before the?
I haven't seen anything yet.
Just thinking if that comes out, then it probably just.
Usually it's like around the same time as we're about to walk into the. Meeting, basically.
What comes out?
The county tax lobby. So you said it's not out until February, it is February, then I just figured, you know, if it does come in, then probably adjust. But I think that's a, you did a nice job of laying out how, it doesn't work well for us right now.
No, or Manchester. Which is just, you know, it's.
Yeah, why the county taxes based upon grand list?
Only, it's a not consumption of services, not population, not. Land mass, nothing, just straight grand list, equalized grand list, no less. Towns don't even get to use the equalized grand list. That's that's, I could go on and on.
Is this town clerk and treasurer appointment article a big deal?
Um, I just put together a piece to speak to it.
But it's on Australian Valley.
No, it's a floor vote.
Floor vote.
Yep, so that way.
It's nice that the history is there to kind of give people, the way Rob put it together, it's.
I I mean, I think it's, what I've done is pretty clunky, to be honest with you, if you have recommendations, I can. Certainly wordsmith a little bit, I tried to. Paint the picture that of like the reality that's happened, basically, where it was, it was more of a part timey thing. Um, you had clerks basically in their houses with the land records and then things evolved, things get more professional. And you know, and with that, um, kind of the relationship changed.
Yeah, I think the the difference is you kind of, the the town clerk, yet it should be because it's a real job and. You know. With real credentials, it should be employed and all that. The treasurer is a is a whole different animal, actually.
I mean, it could, you could, in some cases, I mean, actually, I can't think of any, typically the professionals are just the finance directors, right? And that's what they do. And they're hired for that, they're usually not elected, I mean, there can be cases where an elected treasurer just happens to be a. A um, a fan, a finance person, but usually not, usually it's.
Right, and that's why the town.
And we, and the town kind of did away.
The treasurer is is a real part time position.
Because we have, we employ a finance person, so the treasurer, um, more or less becomes a.
The treasurer is a lot like the auditor.
Yeah, more of a gatekeeper, um, you know, like more of a gatekeeper, they sign the checks, um. Yeah, more of a gatekeeper, um, you know, like more of a gatekeeper, they sign the checks, um, they kind of look over warrants, they do some audit testing, stuff like that. But very, on a very limited basis. So, sorry, yeah, Henry, to your, because it's a floor vote, the thought was to have a one pager that.
Yeah.
Would inform us, because we're gonna get these questions.
This isn't clunky, I think it's nicely, uh.
I like, I like it. I like it.
There's a. There's a rhythm to it.
Agreed, I think this is, this is well explained.
Yeah.
Yeah, the town clerk, definitely, with the treasurer, I'm just thinking that, to some extent, it's because the treasurer does very little other than sign the checks.
And we, um, yeah, when the town kind of, I don't think would have voted on that across the spectrum years ago, but when the town. Said, okay, we need a, we need a bookkeeper, a full-time person, because it's just, that's what you need to operate a town. That's when that kind of got shifted away from the treasurer capacity over to an employee. So.
So what, where is the article?
There's two of them.
In here?
Yep.
And the article's clear and. Well, it's too late now, isn't it?
They are.
Is it on the agenda?
Yeah, it's on page sixty-one. Sixty-one, articles five and six.
Okay. Oh, okay, very simple, okay.
Yes, classic Farlow.
Yeah.
Can you?
Shall.
Shall you appoint? Because this is why you can't.
And does this require two? Two votes to make it happen or anything like that?
Well, one's for the town clerk.
Yeah, they're individual, so, so one would be.
No, what I was thinking, so, there are some things that you have to present one year and that, like just switch to Australian. It's a two-year process, this is just.
Oh, nope, I think once it's, once it's passed, then, um, then, uh, the board then has the ability to appoint both of those positions.
Okay.
So, trying to be, um, and I, it's very, this is, I see a similar trajectory than, uh, if you remember, we got rid of Listers a few years ago and having a sensor. This is, this, you're gonna see other communities doing this over time too, the same kind of evolution that, that happens. Uh, that's, and that's all I have for town meeting stuff.
Any other questions for Rob regarding town meeting preparation? Alright, then let's, uh, let's spend some money. We have a requisition, number seven, pay nailer and grain.
Two hundred and forty-seven thousand?
Uh, two thirty-four. Oh eight seven.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the requisition of two hundred and thirty-four thousand eighty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents.
Requisition number seven.
Requisition number seven.
Liz, uh, seconds?
I will happily second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes? Let's sign it.
I don't think we need to.
Oh, okay. Done.
All good.
Okay, so now we have some liquor licenses to approve, so we need a motion to.
Yeah, there's a one pager on the.
I'll make a motion to leave this meeting and, and start the liquor control board.
Um, Liz seconds?
I do.
Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so we have a proposal. To award, approve. A second class liquor permit for Jiffy Mart. Uh, a first, third, first class, third class and outside consumption. Uh, license for the Dorset Field Club and an outside consumption license for the Barrel's House. Uh, do I have a motion to approve those three different entities and the classes I just stated?
I'll make a motion to approve those, as, as just spread out.
And I will second.
Thank you, yeah, it's right on the paper here.
Whatever that was.
In a minute, it'll be.
Yeah.
Right now.
Okay, all those, uh, any discussion?
Application.
I, I am particularly concerned about the outside consumption at the Dorset Field Club because I. So I may have a bias there, but, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we are, licenses are approved, uh, motion to leave the liquor board and reopen our meeting.
So moved.
Second by Liz, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
Aye.
Alright, old business. Get back on, Rob.
Yep. Um, got a town office update there, uh, talked about being fifty percent complete. Um, the original scheduled completion date was May fifteenth, obviously that's gonna be pushed back, um, we haven't, we don't have a target date for that yet. Nailor Brain, um, feels that once they get. Kind of full control of the building, they start doing interior stuff and they're gonna have a better sense of where the timeframe is. Um, at this point, my best guess is that we're tracking maybe two to three percent, uh, one to three percent over budget. Um, and there's a, you know, there's a host of reasons for that, um, some of it's, some of it's weather. We didn't, we didn't get the thing closed in until, you know, there was snow on the ground. Um, I think I mentioned to you, Henry, last week about the. Uh, the building's being heated, the plywood seams are taped, um, condensation on the tape. Um, you know, means that the tape has got to get redone, which is, you know, it's a few thousand bucks, stuff like that, and that's.
Is that what contingency would make up for?
Yeah.
So we're talking about almost a hundred thousand dollars.
Yep. But there's some stuff above and beyond the contingency, where's, where the, the, um, the timber, the delivery of the timber is getting pushed. Add, is adding two weeks to general conditions, which that's, you know, that's not a contingency that's added. Um, so I'm just saying, you know, uh, we can keep an eye on it, um, there's, they're hopeful that they can catch up. But the recommendation would be then to review options for using remaining ARPA funds to cover any overage.
Okay.
My hope is, we can use the ARPA to be like, hey, it was cheaper, you know, and you owe less on the bond now, um, but that's, you know. One way or the other, you at least have that at your disposal, so we'll, I'll continue to kind of keep you updated on it, um.
And that's two oh five, yeah.
Um, yes.
Two hundred and five, the ARPA.
Yeah, yeah, yep. Um, on the Brookside Drive, there's no update there, uh, Village Traffic and Speeding. In the packet, there's a proposal from MSK Engineering on a, um, coming up with concept design for the traffic calming in East Dorset. Um, really gonna, it's looking from kind of the north and south of the, um, Route seven Mad Tom intersection. And basically just MSK coming up with a few different, you know, maybe two different options of, um, schematics of, hey, this is what this could look like. And we talked about stuff like sidewalks and, um, you know, uh, curbing treatment, narrowing the road, like we talked about trees.
That's what I was trying to figure, I mean, in two thousand nineteen. This was MSK's.
For the, for the crosswalk, um, and the walk to, like, the Wilson House. So now we're talking about Jim going north and south of there. Um, and actually altering the Route seven corridor.
But this included like the road diet idea back then.
It did, but it didn't get into, you know, sidewalks and.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I wasn't sure what the overlap might be.
Yeah, I'm sure there's gonna, there will be some that they can build on. Um, so I, we have that proposal, you know, basically in front of you guys to, for approval tonight. Um, and we have, it'll take, you know, I suspect it'll take six to ten months or something like that to, to roll it out, so you did. That, in that manner, you're bridging, um, two fiscal years and you have enough money in the engineering, the highway department engineering. Um, budget to, to pay for it, so I think it's something that you could definitely do.
Where did you get that map?
This was from our December two thousand nineteen meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I just, I remembered it, so I went back and.
You dug it up?
Pulled it up. Grabbed it out.
Ooh.
And, you know, it was, it was. Right back, the good old days, you know.
Tom, you're up, Tom.
There's commercial stuff across the street, there's an apartment building down, you know, south of the location. Um, you know, there's the Village Street intersection, there's a few different things that they can come up with to, you know, potentially. Add more of the, uh, villagey, um, look and feel. Um, like, again, going back to sidewalks, road shoulders, stuff like that, where it.
Also, when they had talked about the center strip, you know, that was.
Yeah.
That was something that really would have.
Yeah.
You know, changed the whole feel.
Cost friction.
And cost, yeah.
Yeah, ultimately what.
Traffic friction, I mean.
Yeah. Ultimately, whatever they designed, V-Trans has to approve, so I don't, I'm really not interested in spending fifteen thousand dollars to. Design something that I know V-Trans is not gonna like, so we're gonna have to try to play that game of like. How far can we push it, um, with what we want, um, and still kind of meet their.
Right, they're, they're never gonna approve things like islands, because.
No. Not on that, not on this particular road, no, they, they view it as a, you know, this is a little blip. Um, in a, to get to the, you know, divided, the limited access highway, you know, essentially. Um, and we're also, you know, the dumping point of the limited access highway, but, you know, I think that there may be some, there may be some synergies where. You come up with a design, the next time they're going through, um, their paving projects, you probably could get something included, much like we did endorse it. A couple of years ago, which, where it may either be a cost share with the, with the town and the state, or it may be something that they may even entertain to do themselves. Um, especially if it's just the road diet type stuff. Um, so.
Okay, so you need this approved?
Make a motion to approve the proposed contract with MSK?
Second, from Liz, uh, and we're paying for this, how, Rob?
Out of the highway department budget.
Okay. It's right in, okay.
Yeah, no, we're, I think set up to do it, so it's good.
Alright, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, then it's approved.
And that's it for old business.
Uh, next is the finance report.
Um, delinquent taxes year over year, so, uh, taxes are due March eleventh, which is not very far away.
Heads up, everybody.
Yeah, we, we will, uh, I think we, we did send out, um, reminder statements, uh, the signs will go up in a couple of weeks, um.
That was very nice.
Yeah.
Reminder statement.
Yep, yep.
Little postcard.
Yep, and I think on the delinquent tax side, we're a little bit behind, probably gonna have a couple of properties that. Maybe in the spring end up going to sale, but we'll see what happens. Um, and as far as fiscal twenty-five, we're kind of right at the benchmark, we're kind of like, you know. Almost sixty-five percent of the way through the year and, and the budget right now is sitting at about sixty-five percent spent.
I was with the delinquencies, you know, that is pretty high for us, you know, over time, isn't it? I thought I remember it's been down to a hundred territory for quite a while.
Typically, um, Jim, it's in that like eighty to one oh five or something like that, so it's a little bit higher, but we bill. Last year, we billed like almost fourteen million dollars, so.
But do we have, do we have?
Percentage of that, it's like.
Do we have a lot of properties and are they, are most of them paying something or?
Well, so the, out of the one twenty-eight, there's probably one property that's more than half of it, so it's.
Which is the same property that's been for years and years?
Yep, yep, um, and the rules have changed a little bit now, so the, um. You have to, in order, you have to be a full, so for this year's delinquencies, you have to actually have, be a full year beyond that to collect that. I'm not really sure how it.
But that would, you know, it does raise the question, I mean, it's one property that's been just out forever, you know. It's like a, you know, that.
If you saw the interest and penalty though, that they're paying, when they do pay.
If, if they pay, wouldn't they, well, you know, it's.
Somebody will.
Yeah, somebody will.
It's just the house had the fire?
It's, I mean, the, the combined, um, it's like twenty, almost twenty-five percent a year additional that they're paying. Yeah.
I just don't get it.
It's eight percent and then one and a half percent interest each month.
I just, I can't understand that at all.
And the town, you know, so, um, and it's not a cash flow issue for us, that's typically what communities get upset about, is you're, you know, it's. Cash flow, we gotta, we can't pay your bills because you didn't pay and, um, but with the, the education. Um, uh, fund collecting, it's, it's not really a cash flow issue, but that is, that particular one is on the list to go. Um, uh, to tax sale, so. Um, what else can I tell you? Uh, we just had a highway truck break down, like yesterday, so that's not fun. Older ones, nothing's gonna be warranted, um, and it's, it's actually, it's. It's due to be replaced, but the replace, it's, we're in this whole world where it takes you.
Two years to replace it.
Yeah, you have to order something like ten years ahead of when you actually want the darn thing. Um, in a, in, in order to actually get it when you want it, um, so we're, I thought we would have had the replacement, um, by Christmas, but we don't have it.
How big of a truck?
It's one of the larger ones, one of the tandems that does the dirt roads. Um, so hopefully it's only down for a little bit, but it's, you know, having to get towed.
What happened?
Um, just some kind of engine malfunction, yeah, nothing, nothing bad, no, nothing.
So it had to be towed?
Yeah. Yep, yep, and it's a two thousand thirteen, I think, or fourteen, so it's, it's, like I said, it's gonna get replaced once the new truck gets here. Supposedly the new truck is sitting in Williston, waiting for a body to be put on it.
Oh, okay, so we're close.
Yeah, we're not that.
It was already ordered.
Yeah, we'd ordered it, we just missed it by like a few months, basically, you know, by a winter.
Okay.
You know, um, you know me, I'm pretty, I don't like change. So the, the thought of like, you know, signing a sales contract a year before when you normally would do it, I just couldn't, I really struggled with it. Um, so that made, on the highway department side.
Cause they required down payments and all that stuff too.
Yeah, the highway, that might put us over a little bit, but we'll see. Um, salt and sand is getting pretty low too, um, on the supply side. Um, I've updated the, the ARPA number.
I've heard that you can't find it either now.
What's that?
Salt and sand.
Um, we don't use sand, we use, um, stone.
Or, or, but salt, I heard that, it's hard to even get it delivered, you know.
Um, yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure, we, we have, um, enough storage for a whole year and a little bit, so we still, we still have a good amount. Um, we definitely should have enough for the rest of the winter.
Okay.
Um, but, but.
A bunch of the plows are to go.
One of the reasons, yeah.
They can't get it anymore.
One of the reasons that we built that facility on Route thirty was that we, so typically, before we built that, we could store a tenth of what we used. So we were having, there was a truck that would come every single week to, to deliver salt, and then there was a year where this, this happened, the supply line kind of got. Cut short, so we were, um, we were, you know, the state was helping out, other towns were just like. I'll give you a load if you bring me one later, and it was just, it was a mess. Um, so, yeah, we're kind of insulated from that for the most part, but I, I do know that, that, um, the amount of. There's different truck, there's the salt companies that distribute it, and then there's the trucking companies that bring it to you, and some of the trucking companies have. Um, either changed hands or they're not, some of them aren't doing it, I think that's part of it too. What else? I mentioned the ARPA balance is updated and, um, that's pretty much it.
Rob, on the, um, White and Burke, for their next phase, does that include, did it in this twenty-three thousand or is that beyond?
Um, some of it, some of it is included, um, Frank, and then some of it is gonna be, they're gonna have like a brokerage proposal. So that if we carry through with the RFP and sign an agreement with a developer. That they, there's a brokerage agreement that they have that is kind of like a, almost like a Realtors type, um, commission based thing that they do. So that's, then that's a document that I, you know, obviously we'll have, uh, sooner rather than later, so we have a better sense of what that is structured like. My understanding is it's like a percentage, but it's paid out over time. Um, but I, you know, I, I should just be quiet until I actually get the document. That's what I should do.
We're paying them to do all this work, but then they gotta.
Fee on top. Fee on top.
Yeah.
Kind of like a finder's fee?
Real estate.
Anytime, well, anytime, um, the Vermont law requires, you know, when, if we give this property to a developer for a dollar and Whitenburg was involved, they have their, like, there's a brokerage agreement that's needed, that's legally like required, I think, is the way it was explained to me. Because they were involved. It kind of covers their. I'm not sure of the compensation terms, that'll be, that'll, that'll come out at some point. But that's, so the, the hope, Frank, is that the, what we didn't spend on the first part of the phase is gonna, is gonna do kind of the RFP drafting and some of the admin stuff. And then that would get you to the point where, you know, you, then you've got the RFPs and the developers in front of you, and then, you know, Whitenburg would still be involved because they've, you know, they've helped to make the deal essentially.
Okay.
Motion to accept the finance report as presented.
So move.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, onto the manager's report.
Highway stuff we talked about, if, if your mailbox gets assassinated, just give me a call or an email and we'll come fix it. The snow banks are getting really high, so it's not, you know.
I should have done that a year ago.
Yeah.
Did you see the, the wait class sign at the bottom of Dammy Mountain Road?
No, did we get it with the wing?
Assassinated. It, it was like, it was like such a clean cut. So, so you basically got the, the pole up about this.
The Town of Dorset sign on, on Dorset West Road got a little piece taken out of it.
Yeah.
And then the sign is just kind of resting on those, you know, it's kind of half up still.
Yeah, we don't have cameras on the trucks, but some days I wish we do, like, like Saturday or late, late Saturday or early Sunday would have been the day to have the camera on the truck so people could see what it's like to drive the thing, cause you can't, you can't even see those signs. Like, you're just driving along and you're just trying to stay in the middle of the road. So, yeah, I mean, between that and then the, you know, the preparation for the next storm, right now, they're, they're pushing back banks with the greater wing. There are some, I think in the last two winters, we didn't, the wing of the grader did not get put on it to push snow. And this, this winter, we pushed, like, three times, I think, already, so.
It was kind of bummed when.
I was kind of bummed at my driveway when they took out the bank at first, cause, you know, I, since we had two cars, two cars get totaled on.
Kind of a safety net.
New Year's Day. Somebody came down, just kept going on straight and hit both of, both, both of the cars that were parked there. And they ended up, both, both had that up totaled.
And the snowbank would prevent that, yeah.
Snowbank would have pushed them back into the road, but, but.
That's, that's, that's horrible.
It was kind of a bummer.
Yeah. It was seven A.
He was very calm about it.
Seven AM, January first.
Kind of a bummer.
Couple of months.
Seven AM, January first. Boy, that's a rude awakening. That is a rude awakening.
Yeah, the bottom of the hill can, is, can be difficult.
That's a, that's a tough curve.
But we're lucky. The guys do a really good job. They really do.
Well, make note that sign is, needs to be picked up or something.
Okay. Now the bottom of Dammy Mountain.
Yep, yep. It's that weight, you know, twenty-fourth, no more than twenty-four thousand pounds or something like that.
I mean, this has been a tough time for the.
It's winter, it's a real winter.
Yeah, it's, yeah, like the old winters.
Yeah, it's been fantastic. I loved it. Yeah.
Yeah, no, the water system leaks are very easy to find now because they surf, they come to the surface rather than going down, cause the ground's frozen. So the Dorset Village has had two, one we fixed, one we haven't been able to fix yet. But typically, in Dorset, over here too, it's the same way, that the soils are so gravelly that the water never.
Just goes down.
Never comes up, but now, with frost below it, it'll, it'll.
It's still low, even though.
So that shows you how deep the frost is, Frank.
Even though we have all the snow, snow like the old days, we're still had enough rain coming down and stuff that, you know, that's, that's, you know, getting rid of some of this snow is, if you have to do it by hand. It's tough stuff, cause you get it all freezing, freezing rain coming on top of snow and then more snow and more freezing rain.
Get, get people, Jim. You need to get people.
I, I've got people, but.
Tractors.
But I, I still do stuff myself too.
Get the little front loader.
Yep. A lot of the other stuff we've talked about, I think the only other thing to note, the trust for public land, they were at our last meeting. I've been told that they haven't, they were, were able to get an agreement in place for the purchase of that parcel.
Oh, good.
Which is a really good thing, and as that stuff starts to roll out, it's gonna be really, really good. You know, hopefully, there's no, no issues. The, the nice thing about the trust for public land is they're intermediary, they're able to, their mission is to conserve land, and they're able to get it into the ownership status that makes the most sense, so. Yeah, that's pretty much all I have, other than, you know, town meetings coming up.
Do you want to mention that, that letter from Richard Farley?
Oh, about this property?
Yeah, yeah, so that, we got a letter from Richard Farley, you know, owns Wooden Signs, you know, seemingly, you know, unaware that this property, you know, that we'd, we'd had a survey and, and we just.
Long time ago, but, yeah.
Had determined that we were gonna make this green space. And so he wrote a letter saying, well, that just seems such, like such a waste, and we have such a housing crunch. Why not make it into a duplex or quadruplex or something like that? Rob, Rob just, you know, mailed them back a letter saying, you know, we went, did the survey, and this is what the, you know, sixty percent of the people, you know, asked.
It was pretty, I mean, for our, I mean, from my vantage point, it was pretty, it was nice because it said, do this, you know? It's pretty clear, like, most of the neighbors want to do this, and, and the people that participated were specifically just East Dorset residents, so.
Unfortunately, he missed that.
Percentage, it was pretty good participation.
What is the viability of this building too? Could you renovate this building to be a couple of apartments?
It gets really, uh, I mean, anything's possible. It would be expensive, but, yeah.
And septic capacity would be a big issue. You'd be grandfathered at, you know, ten employees, which is not even enough for a bedroom. So you'd have to find somewhere for a brand new, fully compliant wastewater system, which is tough for this lot.
The soils aren't great.
Okay.
And then the back portion of the lot, that's basically, it's, it's eight tenths of an acre. Two, two tenths of an acre is the back part of it, and that has a deed restriction on it. That's where the playground is. That has a deed restriction on it, that it has to be kind of like open and available to the public forever. And it can't be developed, can't have buildings on it, you know, buildings in the building sense. So I'm not sure how that would dovetail with, you know, if, if this was, the front part was like privately owned apartments or even if it was owned by nonprofit or not.
So we couldn't put the septic system back there?
I don't, you could probably make a case that you couldn't, yeah, based on the.
The deed restriction.
Based on the deed, yeah, it's very specific. So between the, yeah, between the survey and then that, the deed, it kind of says, you know, it kind of points in that one direction.
It's just like in New York City where they're taking a lot of old office buildings and turning them into apartments, and it's like, it's hugely expensive to do that. It, they don't translate easily.
Yeah, and you know, the other thing that.
Put in a lot of bathrooms, you gotta put it, you know.
Yeah, we never really, you know, talked about it a ton because it never, we never gave it that much air because the survey kind of informed us that it, it wasn't something that was supported. You know, but you, you know, this is, it's a, this is a part-time building right now, you know? There's people here during the weekdays when most people are probably not at their house either. And it's a large building. You definitely would have, you'd have to get through some kind of permitting. I assume multifamilies, there's usually conditional uses, there's kind of character of the area type stuff. You might, you might run into some difficulties with like a, a big four-unit apartment complex in the middle of the village.
People just, I just need to think, you just put up some two-point-four walls and it's just.
Yeah, no, the rules don't allow for that, right? That's, why is it gonna take us two years to get to, um, build some houses in Raptor Lane? Cause, cause the rules. So.
Okay, thank you. Anything more on the manager's report?
Nope.
All right, let's sign some warrants and. Get out of here. Oh, man, we're a little bit behind. Just three minutes.
Rob, can you save me a printed packet if you have one?
Yes.
For tonight's meeting?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll need a pen.
Got the, the whole shebang there.
Yeah, there's town reports to pick up too, Frank.
Yeah.
Got a pen. Okay, thank you. Uh, while we're doing that, I'll just take this opportunity to, this will be the last regularly scheduled meeting that Liz will be attending as she leaves the select board. So, Liz, I think you know, we all thank you for your service. I was trying to remember how many years you've been here.
Cheers.
I counted eight, but really nine?
No.
I think nine is. Nine's the number.
What a run.
Bravo, bravo. Well, thank you.
You're very welcome. It's been my absolute pleasure.
Cheers.
And good luck. How's it working out?
It's great. It's fun. It's, it's fantastic.
Lot of lot of work.
A ton of work. It's forty thousand square foot startup.
You think you're still gonna be able to do the hybrid thing?
Well, I'm gonna tell you one thing. If you think housing is hard to figure out in southern Vermont, it's worse in the Hudson River Valley.
Oh, my God.
Oh, my goodness gracious.
Wow.
I'm considering an airstream at the moment. We're looking into, it's, yeah, oof. You know, same idea, COVID, everybody moved, Brooklyn moved up to the Greater King scenario. It's just, um, but yeah, I've got, you know, time and some places to stay, so I'm doing it hybrid at the moment, which is kind of fun, going down a couple nights a week.
Yeah.
It's fun.
You get to eat out a lot?
All those things.
All right, is there any other business that anybody would like to bring up?
Nope.
Okay, then I entertain.
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn. I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.